All right. We will reconvene the... We'll adjourn the board closed session and reconvene the Board of Education open session meeting at 7:05. We'll have our pledge of allegiance led by Santa Fe Middle School.
Good evening, President Gilliland and Board of Education members, Dr. Therosian and MUSD Cabinet. It is my honor and privilege to introduce to you tonight two awesome Cougar eighth-grade scholars. They are the final installment of the Anderson saga here in Monrovia. This is Maddie and Ben Anderson, eighth-grade students who will be leading us this evening.
Good evening, Monrovia Board of Education, Monrovia Unified Cabinet and Community Members. My name is Ben Anderson and I am an eighth-grade student at Santa Fe. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
My name is Maddie Anderson. I am an eighth-grade student at Santa Fe. Over the past three years, I have enjoyed my time at Santa Fe. I have been a part of many opportunities offered to me. I enjoyed two years in the band Learning from Mr. Ellis. This year, I joined the Renaissance Program and have been part of a team of students that recognize other students and staff for the great things they accomplish. I have also enjoyed two years of stagecraft with Ms. Gack, and then there's robotics. I know that both Ben and I have learned a lot about teamwork, how to engineer and programming thanks to this awesome endeavor. Santa Fe has provided me with an educational and fun three years of learning, growth, and preparation for Monrovia High School. Thank you.
And of course, we had to bring a little Santa Fe swag. And so, for...are we going to do the pic? So, I kindly ask that-
Don't sit down, students. We're gonna have a picture.
Yeah. That President Gilliland and Board members and Cabinet members, if we bring our Santa Fe pennants to the picture, please.
Thanks so much, Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School. Appreciate it. Roll call. All members and Cabinet are present. During our closed session, we discussed several employee issues. And in closed session, on a motion by Ms. Lockerbie, seconded by Mr. Wong, the Board voted to approve the compromise and release agreement between the district and certificated employee number GN6661456 with four-to-one vote, with Mr. Hammond dissenting. Under order of business, I believe we have some changes to the order a little bit. Dr. Therosian?
We do, President Gilliland. As we have some student representatives here, we'll be moving information item number two to precede the first one. And our beautiful murals around the boardroom will be presented by Shannon Fitzpatrick and our students. In addition, we'll be moving consent items two and four, both individual services agreements, into action to precede action item J1 from Business Services HVAC.
Great. So, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the annual organization meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Any discussion? Ms. Huff, please take the vote.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Next, we'll approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education open session meeting and MUSD Finance Corporation meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I believe there was an amendment to that.
Yes, President Gilliland. The minutes have been amended, and so we propose that the amendments-
Move as amended.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Ms. Huff, please take the vote.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
All right. With that, we'll move on to recognitions and communications. I see huge trophies over here. I see lots of people in the audience. So, Dr. Kaiser, would you like to talk to us a little bit about the past program?
I would love to. Thank you, Board President Gilliland and Board. Tonight, we're going to be honoring our past program, which is our tutoring program. And we have none other but the wonderful Duke Firemuth, who is going to come and introduce us to his students that are tutors. We have had literally hundreds, if not thousands, of students in this town tutored and helped by Duke's tutors throughout the years. And every year, we take a time in one of our meetings to honor the students who give up their time so graciously to help those that need help. It's a lesson not only in math and reading and science and social studies, but it's a lesson in community service and giving back. And so, I'd like Duke to come and to do the honors.
Thank you, Sue and Board. This is always a great night for me because I get to thank these kids that I thank all the time for their wonderful service. I mean, they are just amazing. And there's no better way to start than by quoting our superintendent. And she wrote a little article here in the school news. And I just wanted to say, it says, "Martin Luther King once said that the function of education is to teach, to think intensively, and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that's the goal of a true education. The Monrovia Unified School District invests its resources into creating pathways for each of our students to meet that goal." That was the quote from Martin Luther King that Dr. Therosian used. And I don't think there's anything more appropriate. One of our pathways is our tutoring program. These kids have been absolutely amazing. We've had, I was explaining, ninety-one so far this year, ninety-one tutors. We had sixty-seven high school honors and volunteers. And we had another thirty-four college and adult volunteers, college students that were through our work-study program and volunteers. And it's just been amazing. I mean, to see the growth and see the kids and see their work. I was telling somebody yesterday that, you know, they don't even want to go when it's over. I said, "Well, it's five o'clock now, guys. We've gotta leave." They go, "No, can't we just wait another five minutes, Mr. Fry? They've got a test tomorrow." And I go, "Okay, okay," you know? But it's really, it's a great thing. Anyway, I am going to call the names. Oh, and I almost forgot. The most important, we've invited these students, but we also invite their families because one of the most important things is the support that their families give. The families are there for them. They drop them off. They pick them up. They support them. And without the families, we wouldn't have this program. So, I appreciate them, and you are honored as well as your child today in the tutor program. As I said, I told, I think, Mr. Bun, that I said, "The apple doesn't far fall far from the tree." And that's why, you know, we honor all these wonderful parents. Okay. I'm not going to go any longer. And what I wanted to do, first of all, I'm going to introduce the students. They will come up. They'll shake hands with the Board. And then, we're going to go back into the other room where they'll be given their certificates. They have a certificate of community service and a certificate of appreciation. The certificate of appreciation says it's for your role in the success of the past program and the empowerment of Monrovia Unified School District students towards academic success. And then, we have, so we will give them that as they finish. So, if you want to hold your applause, we've got quite a few we could go through. Just hold your applause to the end. We'll clap for them all because they all deserve it. They're absolutely wonderful. Okay. Is the Board gonna come up? And you want to come up and sit down? And I'll start calling your names. The first group of people that we are going to honor today are a very special group of tutors that are, we call them, we call it our Mandarin Table. These are kids who are helping our Mandarin immersion students every Monday and Tuesday from four to five at the Monrovia Public Library. They have two tables there, and they just, it's amazing. We have dozens of parents who bring their kids there, and they really appreciate the great work that they do. So, we're gonna call their names. Come on up, shake their hand, and then you guys can leave and go out to the other room, and then we'll start passing out those certificates. Okay. First of all, Kathy Fong, Stacy Bun, Jessica Bun, is Christie Foo here? Christie? Oh, she's way back there. Okay, come on, Christie. Mark Zhang and Naomi Chang. Okay. Those are our wonderful tutors from...these are our Mandarin tutors. Now, for our regular high school tutors, yeah.
Maybe they shouldn't leave. We could take a look at all of them.
Want to get a picture? Okay. They want a picture, girls?
Yeah, they could stay in the room and maybe-
We're gonna make it, we're gonna...yeah, I hope we have enough room. We want to stand over, yeah, if you guys stand over there, we're gonna take a picture too. And I wondered about that. That'd be great. That's great. Okay, let me call the high school students now. Arizaza Acevez, Mr. Layala, Caesar Iguano Torres, Louis Aleo, Jason Barr, Jamari Bars, Julie Baptista, Alyssa Beth Baptista, Isabel Baptista, Maria Baptista. I think we have a run on Baptistas. Natalie Beltran, Abigail Banuelos, Catherine Burito, Kashai Boone, Alexis Buckman Buchanan, Beatrice Cabo. Beatrice is one of our tutors, she's now, I think, in Cuba, but she's coming back. Eva Esther Chung, Julian Carrillo, Erica Chavez, Erin Comea, Daniel Cruz, Michael Camacho, Emily De Luna, Alexandra Frer, Sandra Garcia, Angelina Garcia, Isaac Guzman, Gabriela Gutierrez, John Gomia, Faith Hawthorne, Christian Hernandez, Daniel Hernandez, Andrew Huerta, Faith Hussey, Shezah Jamal, Leslie Joy Escon, Juliana Joya, Ethan Ko, Xandra Kirkov, Mia Ledesma, Marcelo Ledesma, Daya Lawrence, Crystal Landeros, Abigail Banuelos, Melody Figueroa Buenoastro, Wei Chin Lee, Karina Lozama, Samantha Limone, Ingrid Lopez, Macala Lopez, Matthew Martinez, Daniel Martinez, Darnine Magar, Rosalie Mira, Jezebel Milaria, Jasmine Murillo, Gabriela Moyaroki, Gabby, Nolan Nguyen, Brian Rojas Sandoval, Andrew Ortega, Elizabeth Rojas Noala, Jaya Williams, Paco Wong, Zanth Yeps, Ethan Tonde. And then, we're going to, finally, our college kids. Cassidy Aparicio, Cassandra Carmona, Sinead Castillo, Latanya Colson, Paulo Comea, Nahid Nyatzadeth, Carlos Gomez, Marlene Gutierrez, Robert Gutierrez, Kathy Fong, Alex Joe Esquam, Susan Levine, Amanda Jones, Maria Lozama, Veronica Lozama, Armin Naval, Kevin Nguyen, Alex Perez, Elaine Bogosian, Myra Ramirez, Andrew Santiago, Savannah Temple, and Maria Velez. Susan, do we call, oh, yeah, we call Susan Levine. Susan is one of our adult tutors. She's a former teacher, and she absolutely is wonderful with those kids at the library. Okay, we can, let's give them all a round of applause. Many of them couldn't make it tonight. They got my, they've got our sickness, so.
All right. All my shirts, you need to get them right. Sit, sit. Just across your legs, just across the knees. The other guy's got his knees right behind him. Sit down, sit. Stay. I'm sorry. Three lines, three lines. They are providing us with-
I know.
We're shooting at part 02, so we need seven rows. Four, six, seven. We need three more down in flats, so one, two, three. And, yeah, don't hide in the back. Maybe I can just draw a straight row. Come on, man. I'll keep you guys back. Okay, my middle-sized people, you're gonna be in the second row. You're gonna be in between the ones in the front row. So, if you guys stand on your knees that long, we'll just put you guys down one at a time, because you guys are all in the same height range. If you get sent back, you're gonna go there. You're gonna go there. You're gonna turn right over here. You're gonna be right there. You're gonna be right here. All right. Listen to Charles. Can you move that? Yes. That way we can move them around a little more. Don't do damage to it. You're gonna go right there. Okay, you can stay. You can stay up. This way. You can stay where you are. Get him closer. Board members, hang on. Let's get you down on your knees right here. I want to be able to see the Board too. As you can. You guys are too far out, so let's see about you. Just for first. Back them up to the back. You guys stand, Charles, on the chair. And just leave them on the floor. And you, you can leave me a gap. I better put these guys in too. Come on over. Let's get you in here. Shannon here. Come forward. You're there, there you are. And, whatever. Then, are you between people or not? I did get some. All right. I think we got a voice. It's not right. Just take a look to the top. I'm gonna take six pictures. I'm gonna take six pictures, and this is gonna take a few here, a few here, and a few over there, okay? One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you, guys, and thank you, Board.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, really. That's great.
All right. Thanks so much, Duke and proactive tutors. We so much appreciate this group that's walking out the door now and all those that help tutor. They do a wonderful job in this district. With that, we'll move on to our congratulations for Monrovia who, Monrovia High School Dance Team, who won the first-place trophy at the Regional Sharps Competition, so.
President Gilliland, members of the Board, I'm gonna invite Principal Kirk McGinnis to tell us about this wonderful win and the great strides that our dance program has taken at Monrovia High School under the direction of Samara Kelly.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much. Good evening, President Gilliland, members of the Board, Cabinet, community. What a wonderful opportunity to follow all those outstanding tutors. What an inspiring evening this is. They, we're so thankful for all their support. And our school, our school communities are stronger because of all the dedication of folks like them. And tonight, we're here to celebrate some more scholars and champions. This year, we are excited to see the next level of our dance team. And we've always had talent on our campus, but this time, we're able to celebrate some, an outstanding trophy, some wonderful accomplishments. And I'd like to introduce our dance teacher. She's in her second year with us here at Monrovia High School, Ms. Samara Kelly, to talk a little bit about their accomplishments.
Thank you. Yeah, so, before the winter break, the team competed at a regional competition, a Sharp competition. They had solo, duo, trio, small team, medium team, and large-team numbers, not only in hip-hop, but in lyrical dance, in contemporary dance as well. And their overall score put them in first place for their division, which earned them that amazing trophy and the title of master champion, so, yes. And they danced their, they danced their heart out, their hearts out that night. So proud of them. Their practices were tense, and they definitely, definitely deserved it. So, I'm really looking forward to the future of the team and couldn't be prouder of their effort. Congrats, guys. And-
So, there's some certificates here, so let me to call your students. So, the first certificate is for our coach, our wonderful dance teacher, Ms. Samara Kelly. And it reads, "From the Monrovia Unified School District Board of Education wishes to congratulate Samara Kelly for leading the dance team to first-place wins at the Regional Sharp Competition." So, congratulations.
Amazing. Thank you. Okay, sure, absolutely.
And then, have them come on down.
Great. So, when I call your name, guys, you can come on down, get your certificate. We have Julie Baptista. Okay. Next, we have Ms. Mia Betker, our amazing manager. Dominique Blanco, new to the team. Erin Carlson, she here tonight? Great. Isabel Castananda, I think she is not here. That for her, anyway. Raquel Etcheverria. No, Raquel. Ms. Sala Kelly, one of our amazing captains. Jezebel Malara, our head captain. Sabrina Munoz. Kalen, Kalen Oliver, another captain. Oh, she's here. Andrea Rendon. Brianna Rubio. Shasid Sanchez. Casey Clark. Aleah So, another captain of ours, who has been injured all semester, unfortunately, recovering from a knee injury, but she's been at every practice telling the girls to clean their moves up. Great job. And Monique King, I think she is sick, unfortunately. And last, but definitely not least, our beloved freshman, who's worked so hard this year, Ms. Hannah Tucker. Congrats, guys. Thank you so much to the Board for honoring us tonight. We couldn't be more grateful.
Yeah.
Josh. 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 Josh, congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yeah.
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 One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you guys and thank you board. Uh, yeah, thank you. Oh, really, that's great. Alright, thanks so much Duke and proactive tutors. We so much appreciate this group that's walking out the door now and all those that help tutor. They do a wonderful job in this district. With that, we'll move on to our congratulations for Monrovia who, uh, Monrovia High School Dance Team, who won the first place trophy at the Regional Sharps Competition, so.
President Gillan, members of the board, I'm gonna invite Principal Kirk McGinnis to tell us about this wonderful win and the great strides that our dance program has taken at Monrovia High School under the direction of Samara Kelly.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much. Good evening, President Gillan, members of the board, cabinet, community. What a wonderful opportunity to follow all those outstanding tutors. What an inspiring evening this is. They, we're so thankful for all their support. And our school, our school communities are stronger because of all the dedication of folks like them. And tonight, we're here to celebrate some more scholars and champions. This year, we are excited to see the next level of our dance team. And we've always had talent on our campus, but this time, we're able to celebrate some, an outstanding trophy, some wonderful accomplishments. And I'd like to introduce our dance teacher. She's in her second year with us here at Monrovia High School, Ms. Samara Kelly, to talk a little bit about their accomplishments.
Thank you. Yeah, so before the winter break, the team competed at a regional competition, a Sharp competition. They had solo, duo, trio, small team, medium team, and large team numbers. Not only in hip-hop, but in lyrical dance, in contemporary dance as well. And their overall score put them in first place for their division, which earned them that amazing trophy and the title of master champion, so. Yes. And they danced their, they danced their heart out, their hearts out that night. So proud of them. Their practices were tense and they definitely, definitely deserved it. So I'm really looking forward to the future of the team and couldn't be prouder of their effort. Congrats, guys. And.
So, there's some certificates here, so let me to call your students. So, the first certificate is for our coach, our wonderful dance teacher, Ms. Samara Kelly. And it reads, "From the Monrovia Unified School District Board of Education wishes to congratulate Samara Kelly for leading the dance team to first-place wins at the Regional Sharp Competition." So congratulations.
Amazing, thank you.
And then if you want to.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
And then have them come on down.
Great, so when I call your name, guys, you can come on down, get your certificate. We have Julie Bautista. Okay. Next, we have Ms. Mia Betker, our amazing manager. Dominique Blanco, new to the team. Erin Carlson, she here tonight? Great. Isabel Castananda, I think she is not here. That for her anyway. Raquel Etcheveria. No Raquel? Ms. Sela Kelly, one of our amazing captains. Jezebel Malara, our head captain. Sabrina Munoz. Kalen, Kalen Oliver, another captain. Oh, she's here. Andrea Rendon. Brianna Rubio. Shasid Sanchez. Casey Clark. Aleah So, another captain of ours, who has been injured all semester unfortunately, recovering from a knee injury, but she's been at every practice telling the girls to clean their moves up. Great job. And Monique King, I think she is sick unfortunately. And last, but definitely not least, our beloved freshman who's worked so hard this year, Ms. Hannah Tucker. Congrats, guys. Thank you so much to the board for honoring us tonight. We couldn't be more grateful.
Yeah.
Selene, where are you?
I'm over here.
Okay. Yeah, Lisa, you're gonna hide in here. Dr. T, you're in the right spot. You ready? He's got too short for his gown. I think you can see. You might have to be on your chair, though. One, two, look over here. One, two, three. One, two, three, one more, one, two.
Wait, wait.
Wait, nobody go anywhere. Your parents, consider.
Alright, great job, dance team. Gonna tell you, it's a really privilege to be up here and on the school board of this district where we emphasize academics and arts and athletics and have so many programs for these students to participate in. And they rise to the challenge. They bring home trophies that are bigger than they are.
They speak or than.
They turn into tutors that come back and help the students that are still at the schools and we appreciate all the efforts of everyone in putting all this together. With that, we'll move on to board member reports. Ms. Trevante, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, President Gillan. Before winter break, I had the pleasure of attending the Monrovia High School Winter Concert, which consisted of the jazz ensemble, chamber string ensemble, symphonic band, and the camarada singers. They're great performances under the direction of Daniel Magallanes. There is a reason why they are award-winning, so please don't miss any future performances that they may have at the high school. It's just fabulous. I also had the privilege of attending the elementary school winter concert. What a treat that was. From beginning and advanced concert band, string orchestra, to our elementary school choirs. Lots of talent out there. I encourage you parents to please continue to have your children participate in these wonderful programs. It's really great things happening at our schools, so that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to our, uh, excuse me, and to our student. Board member report. We're gonna hear from Monrovia High School tonight.
Yes. On Thursday, January 10th, the Renaissance Program will be welcoming motivational speaker Dee Hankins to MHS to present his inspirational message to the class of 2021 as part of the Renaissance Passport to Success. On Monday, January 14th, MHS will be hosting a, and, MHS will be hosting a Future Wildcat Parent Night at 6:00 PM in the auditorium jointly with Clifton Principal Jennifer Jackson and Santa Fe Principal Jeff Zamiripa. On Tuesday, January 15th, Johnston's representative Bryant Partridge will be conducting a senior assembly to distribute information on caps and gowns as well as class rings. On Thursday, January 24th, the Renaissance Program will be hosting their Second Annual Renaissance Winter Recognition Rally, where over 140 MHS students will be celebrated for their academics, academic efforts and achievements. On Friday, February 1st, the Monrovia Renaissance Foundation will be hosting the Second Annual All District Staff Talent Show at 6:00 PM in the Taylor Performing Arts Center. Tickets will be available next week at each school site for only $5 apiece. Thank you.
Thanks so much, appreciate that report. Alright, moving on to the report from Dr. Therosian.
Thank you, President Gillan, members of the board and community. I'd like to invite you to a treat we'll be having at the Monrovia High School Performing Arts Center. Aladdin for Kids, performed by our Wild Rose School of the Arts students. It will be on January 18th at 7:00 PM. I encourage you to go and see this extraordinary performance. If you missed it at Wild Rose, you'll be able to see it on the stage with our kids using mics and really having an opportunity, elementary school students having an opportunity to go on the big stage. And they really did an amazing job at their school. We thought it was, they were ready for the big stage.
Great, thank you, Dr. Therosian. Okay, we'll move on to public comments. We absolutely want to hear from the public. If you have comments, make sure you fill out one of these forms and hand it to Ms. Huff here. And we'll let you address the board. First off, we'll take public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Now, we've added a new little blurb on this forum and I want to just say it here. "In compliance with the Brown Act, items that are not on the agenda legally cannot be discussed by the board tonight." "We welcome your input, but we are limited to asking clarifying questions and gathering contact information. If there are items that require board discussion or action, those will have to be calendared at a future meeting." So with that in mind, or do we have any comments for items not on the agenda?
There are none.
Second part of this is items that are on the agenda. If you have comments for items on the agenda, you can either address those comments now or wait until that item comes up by its place on the agenda. Do we have any comments for items on the agenda?
There are none.
No, we just have all these good-looking artists and people sitting out in this audience and I gotta tell you, I am looking so forward to this next item. If you look around the room here, you're gonna see some artwork. And Mr. Garcia, if you'll come up, we'll hear about these, but that we have such a great residents, artists, thanks for being here tonight and we just appreciate looking at our schools hanging on the, on the board. I was gonna digress just a bit. Just to say that it's so valuable for our students to learn how to take an object like the front of their school building and turn it into a piece of art. And I think these murals depict that very well. So Mr. Garcia, if you'd tell us about this project, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, President Gillan, Monrovia School Board, Dr. Therosian, and cabinet. I am extremely pleased to be here tonight to introduce the Doors of Education, part of our Monrovia Masterpiece Murals Project, which we started six years ago in an effort to provide an opportunity for our community to experience the arts in a physical and visible way, not only for our students, but for this wonderful community. So tonight, we are in effect unveiling these 10 masterpiece murals that are on our walls here in the boardroom. They were created by our Monrovia students under the guidance of our good friend and talented artist in residence, Ms. Shannon Fitzpatrick. And several of our students who worked on these paintings are here tonight. Several, over the years, Shannon has been responsible for guiding our students to paint 15 of these murals on the walls at all five of our elementary school campuses, and they are beautiful. So tonight, we celebrate these new paintings being hung on our wall and I'd like to take a moment right now to bring up my very special friend and our artist in residence, Ms. Shannon Fitzpatrick.
When should I bring them up?
After you're finished talking.
Okay. Alright, how nice to be here and to be here again with the board. I really appreciate it. All the smiling faces that I see when I come in and out of your building. This last project that we just finished was almost a three-month project. So I think even the young women that work in the offices downstairs knew me by my first name and how to spell it by the time I got through. But this project started, as I said, almost three months ago. And Dr. Therosian and Dr. Kaiser, who is a longtime friend of mine, I used to teach 5th grade with Dr. Kaiser many years ago. And they said, "We have an idea." And that was to help the students paint, reproduce what the front of their, each of their individual schools looked like. And I, so then I got my camera, which I'm not the most experienced in the world with picture-taking. And I, my husband came with me and we drove around to all of the 10 schools and took several pictures in the front, trying to get the front doors with doors to education and the trees and the beautiful bushes and flowers and trying to work all of that in. And then when I did get the views that I wanted, then I went to the principals and kind of double-checked with them if they thought that view and that would be all what we wanted to do. And they were more than cooperative and more than helpful. So what has happened is the first thing, we took the photographs of the schools, then we projected the photograph onto the ESOS that you see here and traced that in, and then we painted it in. And I worked with the five elementary schools, which I had worked with many times before, and, and taught the students how to mix the colors and use the colors and so forth. And several of the schools have a nice Art Deco design to them, which is very clean and very soft colors. And I do notice here in looking around that some of the titles of the schools, the names of each school are on each painting and some are silver, which is what really is on the buildings. But I may need to darken those up a little bit, touch those up a little bit. I'll see how they go after a little bit. And I do have, we have the two high schools, Canyon Oaks, and we also have Monrovia High School, which if you look to your, across the room to the other side, the second one from the left, which is an extreme masterpiece in itself. And I would like to have Jasmine and Josiah come up, the two high school seniors who painted every bit of that painting. Come right around here, hon. There you go. They were, Mrs. Sands at Monrovia High School met with me and, and I told her what we needed was a painting of this very famous, unique high school facade. And she said, "I know just who will have do it, Jasmine and Josiah." And fortunately, that's what happened. And I came to meet them and work, well, I didn't really work with them, I watched them. And they were incredible. And they, I gave them the photograph that we wanted painted and they sat down on their low stools and right up at the ESOL. They took their pencils and just, just sketched the entire high school in, just like that, you know, in about a couple of hours and then started painting it in. So the result is theirs. And I just was, it was an honor to meet them and work with them. They're seniors. They're applying at colleges and art colleges. So we just wish them all the luck in the world. Just one more thing I would like to mention. As you look around the room, you will see, just behind the cameraman, the Canyon Early Learning Center painting. And of that building, as you know, there are very small little children that attend there. And so it was a problem as to how we were going to replicate the front of their school. And the week before, I went to their school, which was scheduled to be painted then. I had just finished at Clifton School, which is right to the left. And they had been exceedingly excited and easy to work with, as all of the students were. They were all happy, happy and excited at all of the schools. And so we had the idea, why don't we have, if I go back, check with their principal, go back the next week, I have a free day, and they will paint the Canyon Early Learning Center school facade. And so that's what we did. So they are the good Samaritans of the group here this evening for taking a whole other full day and reproducing a beautiful job. And so that was one of the fun things that happens. Okay. Alright, thank. Okay. They're beautiful.
I see it, alright. One. One, two, three. One, I'm having to call up their things so you can see their names.
And before everybody takes their seats, I wanted to not only thank Shannon, but John Fitzpatrick for all of his help. The better half really did come through and came up with the theme of Monrovia Unified's Doors to Education.
We could say, "Through these doors come the best and the brightest in Monrovia."
Both in teaching and learning.
Both, both. Wonderful, wonderful project. Thanks so much. Alright, with that, we'll move on to the Yes to Success and Dr. Therosian, you have a.
I'm gonna invite Dr. Chris Sistrung from the City of Hope to present to us an exciting opportunity. Dr. Sistrung met with me, I don't. right in our own neck of the woods, which is Duarte. And I realized that we offered a lot of opportunities for Duarte Unified School Districts, and I just thought about, you know, hey, we're a big institution, we need to broaden the horizon. And then I always got asked by other people in the community, "What about us?" And so as opposed to nitpicking where we're going to do programs, I thought about just the three-mile radius of City of Hope. We're going to start there and hit every district, and of course, Monrovia falls into that district. And so, this grant opportunity that I, that me and my team applied for is R-25 Award, and it's actually a cancer, cancer-focused award. And what it is, is we're trying to increase the pipeline of underrepresented minorities that are going into the field. And what we found is that we have a lot of people who go into the field, but they don't stay. So, the program I developed at City of Hope actually goes from the second grade all the way through residency. And that means, I say we go from the school bus to the OR and everything in between. And so although I'm going to be talking about the program that we just got funded, I don't want you to think that this is all that we're offering to Monrovia. This is one program out of twenty. And so, with no further ado, I'll just talk about some of the things, some of the highlights of the program. And so, this grant is funded by the National Institute, Master Cancer Institute, or the NCI, which is a division of the NIH. And so it is focused on cancer, and it has to be focused on cancer. And if you didn't know, City of Hope is a designated comprehensive cancer center. And this partnership is also with Monrovia, as well as Duarte, El Monte School District, as well as Azusa. And so some of these things are going to be about the programming entirely. And so, just a little background, so you can see why the US government was wanting us to do this, is because over the last decade, they spent over $6 billion to increase diversity in the workforce, and they haven't moved a needle one person. So just imagine that. They spent $6 billion and they hadn't increased in anything. And so what this program is meant to do is to increase the pipeline by getting more people into biomedical research and biomedical sciences at an earlier age, and actually keeping them engaged. And so, some of the things that we were called to do, or the answer in this, is we got to collect research support, and we also got to do analysis on, you know, things that we're going to be covering. But more than that, we're trying to break down barriers and increase the pipeline. And so when you think about a pipeline, most institutions are what I call harvesters. They let you guys do all the work, and then they come in at the very end, and it's picked from the best students, without actually sowing into you guys in the early stage. That's what we're going to do with this program. And so, the type, the title of the grant, the Youth Enjoying Science, is where the yes comes from, from the NIH. But we call it Yes to Success, because we're actually going to utilize our core facilities at City of Hope, as, that makes us a comprehensive cancer center. When I say a core facility, I'm thinking about, like, we have a pathology corps, we have a light microscopy corps, we have a flow cytology corps. And so all these things are core facilities that we use at the City of Hope for all of the scientists. And so what we're going to do is, we're leveraging our cores to train the students. And so, give an example, a student will come in, and we'll teach them about light microscopy. But they'll know about it, and it's like, okay, I know how to use a microscope, I know how to do this. But then we'll show them how it plays a role in cancer research, and we'll be able to partner them with somebody that's doing cancer research and utilizing that technology. And so this is what made the application strong, because we're utilizing something that people normally don't use. We have, I think, thirteen to sixteen core facilities. Now granted, we're starting this program in like the eighth grade, and so some of these students are not going to be qualified to go to certain cores, so we actually tailor it for each one of the students. And so, also, you got to understand is that some of the things that we're going to be doing, we're actually partnering with a well-established program at City of Hope, which is the Roberts Academy, and which some of our students in this area have applied to this program, and it's been going on for, I think, sixty years. And so, it is a prestigious program in which, when you're sixteen, you get to come in and actually do a twelve-week program to do research at City of Hope. And so when we looked at the numbers of the students that are getting to this program, which actually is a great platform to help you get into college, and even help you get into professional schools, even after you leave college, we didn't see the numbers that we were looking for from our area. So we were getting people from all over the country, and they come, you know, to City of Hope for the summer, but then I started looking at the numbers, where are the students from Monrovia? Where are the students from Duarte? Where are the students from where we are? And that's what this grant is doing. We're actually going to increase the pipeline by actually training the students before they even apply to this program. And so this program's going to start in the sixth grade, and then they're not going to be eligible until they get to the ninth or the tenth grade. So you're talking about, not only will they be qualified for this program, but we also set them up to be qualified for other programs within the nation. And so this is what we're going to be doing for your students here. And so if you want to give an idea of what we're going to be doing, the program is broken down into two categories. Outreach, that would be the students from the sixth to the ninth grade, and then research, that's the ninth grade and further on. Because I just talked to Catherine in the back, she said that she had a student who wanted to be in this program. She said, "Oh, but he just graduated." And I was like, "It's okay." Because even after they graduate, we still can invite them to come to this program. And so, this is an interesting program, and, like I said, it was a program that was supposed to have been funded for 2019, but they liked it so much at the NIH, they funded it right away. And so, some of the things that I wanted to just give you an idea, because it is a lot of writing, but if you look at it, this diagram right here can show you that it's just the outreach, what it covers, middle school, sixth to eighth grade, and then some high school, and the research covers from high school all the way to graduate school. And so we're going to have development programs all throughout, and we will do, introduce them to not only mentorship, but also what it's like to be coached. Because a lot of our students don't get that opportunity to find out what coaching is until it's a little too late. And just to give you a basic idea of what we would have, the programs will have site visits. And so what we would do for middle schools, we would come to the school, and we'll actually, prior to us coming to the school, we actually would advertise that we come to the school. And one thing we're going to do, which is really, I'm really excited about, is that we're going to come to the school, so suppose we're coming to a middle school, and we're going to be there in the next month. The first advertisement would be, we set up a booth right outside the school, a pop-up tent, so to speak, and we will give out information for the parents doing pickup and drop-off, telling them, "Hey, we're going to be here next week or next month. Make sure your student is here. We're going to give them opportunity to sign up for some of these programs." And in addition to that, I always know when you show up with a white lab coat and doctor's stuff, somebody's going to come and ask you a question about something that's totally different, you know? I'm like, "Yeah, I do a lot of pathology, but I don't really do, you know, and I do breast cancer research." But they'll ask you, "Hey, I got something on my foot," or "I got a cousin," you know? And so, but, we're going to do that, because the whole idea of it is, is that City of Hope, we want you to know that we're not just somebody that, that's sitting in the community. We are a part of the community, and the best part about this program is, it won't cost you a thing. And even all of the outreach that we're going to do for this program is basically based on the fact that we are sowing into the community, because we are a part of the community. And so we will have Saturday science camps, we also have summer camps, as well as the field trips, because once we get the students, you know, interested in what we're doing, we're going to give them hands-on experiences, but then we're going to actually have them come and do field trips. And with these field trips, they're going to get to meet some of the people that work at City of Hope, some of the doctors, some of the scientists, and get their, get a clear indication that there are multiple opportunities in the healthcare workforce that doesn't require you to go all the way, as they tell me I've gone. I would be a thirty-third grader, and so that's pretty much going all the way. But this is some of the things that we're going to be doing. I don't want to take up too much time, but the visits at school during the district will cover like a system minute. And here's the thing about it, because I was an eighth-grade science teacher, I understand the idea and importance of every minute in class. We will be utilizing the next-generation science curriculum, so the teachers don't have to worry about us stealing class time, because we will have it sewn into our presentations, so the class time's not going to be stolen from them. We have cross-pollination to where we were talking about, whether it's mathematics, social studies, and what do they call it civics now? I don't know what they call it now, but we will make sure that we fall into the criteria of next-generation science, so we won't be stealing class time. And this would be, this is something a little bit more about the tours, and so I can definitely talk to you guys anytime you want about the details of this. I don't want to take up too much of your time. Saturday camps, how it would go, and the one thing about it, the Saturday science camps and all of our camps, is that the last week in our Saturday camps is not for us to really go over anything, it's where we call family and friends. And then the students will be able to show their family and their friends what they've learned, you know? And then, at the end of the year, and probably it's going to start to be in the fall, we're going to have a symposium where all the school districts will come to City of Hope, and they'll be able to show the community what they've done, you know, whether it be through posters or do presentations, because there are different ways to do, to present your work. Some people are not really, you know, suitable, or they don't really want to do, they really get scared to do a public presentation, but they'll do a poster and vice versa. And so we're going to give them opportunity to learn that there are multiple ways to share your work. And summer camps will be for rising seventh graders, so sixth graders really will have to be finished sixth grade before they can come to the camps. And to give you an idea of what we're doing now, things are going to be available right away. We're actually going to start doing, let me go to the right, where are we going? Yeah. So we're actually going to start doing right away all the boot camps, because we want to get the students ready to apply, and this is for the actual high school students, we want to get them ready to apply this year. And so we're actually going to come to the high schools, or the high schools in Monrovia right now, and we're going to do what we call a boot camp, where we're going to get an interest community who want to be involved, who might want to come to these programs, and we'll come to the schools, whether it be after school or during school, we'll have to figure it out when we're going to be there, but we're going to show them the basis of what they're going to need to know before they go into a research laboratory, and to help them apply to the Roberts Academy or any other academy that they want to go to this summer. We're going to offer them that. We hope they apply to the Roberts Academy, but we're not going to limit it to them, because we are going to, we are supposed to be increasing the pipeline, not just to City of Hope, but to everywhere. And so, we're going to give them assistance for that, then we're going to invite them to City of Hope, and we're actually going to do some more training right there on campus prior to them coming to, for them applying to the program, which is in, the end date is March the eighth, so we got a couple of months. But that's why we have to do that right away. And we will have a summer camp for students that are becoming in, the rising seventh graders. So to give you an idea of the numbers of students that we're going to be reaching every year with the outreach part of this program, we're going to be reaching a total of, you know, fourteen hundred students, do site visits, field trips will be for seven hundred and twenty students, Saturday science we'll reach eighty-four, sixth-grade summer camps will be about a hundred and forty students. But the real thing that I really wanted to show you is that we will be paying for the buses and substitute teachers. So, like I said, I was a science teacher, I understand all the dollars and cents that make, you know, because I know when you, you had to get a substitute teacher, you got, somebody had to pay for it, and so we will be willing to pay for it as well. It's all in the budget. The grant is, I don't think it's $2.5 million for five years. But I just wanted to talk to you about that, and to let you also know that we do have other programs that'll be available, but I just wanted to talk to you about this program, because it just got funded. And I'll be happy to take any questions for anybody.
Any questions for Mr. Sistrung?
More of a comment. Thank you so much for being here, it's quite an eye-opener. May we have a calendar of events prior to these visitations, because I would be very interested in being in the classroom when this gets presented. I think it's fantastic.
All right.
And I'm with Mr. Hammond on that. I would like to have all the dates as well. So, thanks for including Monrovia. We really appreciate that opportunity for our students. And I have a seventh-grade student who wants to get into biomedical engineering, but could definitely benefit from this program, so I'm going to keep my eye out as well.
Yeah, we have a lot of research that do biomedical engineering, because they end up making models that'll keep us from using animals, and so they need biomedical engineers for that, so that's right up his alley, or his or her alley, I don't know.
I just wanted to echo the comments of thank you. This is, you know, this is one of the great things about Monrovia, one of the locations, just being the proximity to the City of Hope and such a phenomenal facility. And now for our students to have access in a meaningful way, I think means a lot, not only to the kids, but to the parents who really are looking farther out, beyond what a sixth grader is looking at. Fortunately, you have two key people right there to your left, who I'm sure are absorbing everything you're saying and already trying to plot how to maximize as many of those spots as possible for their students. And we greatly appreciate that you're thinking out beyond just the programs, but going to the buses and substitute teachers, because these are all issues that we deal with internally. You give us no reasons to not participate at the fullest level.
That's the idea.
So, good job.
Yes, yes, yes. So, thank you for having me, and like I said, I'll be available for any questions. I'm very open. Send me an email if you have any other questions about other programs that we have, I'd be more than happy to help you with those as well.
Thanks so much for being here tonight. You know, we tout ourselves as building world-class schools for world-class students, and certainly this program will help us do that with the world-class facility of City of Hope being available to our students, so we appreciate it so much.
No problem, thank you.
Actually, Dr. Sistrung, before you, you said, now, we had identified our, you know, we're limited to one middle school, and it's Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School, as well as our high school. But you mentioned that there would be other opportunities for our other middle school to participate in, in some events in the future. You want to give us a little teaser about that? I'm putting you on the spot, I know.
Well, yeah, no problem. So we have Saturday sciences, science camps that are already set up that they go to. So what we're going to do now is expand those, and one of the things that we really wanted to do is to start to have these Saturday science camps in some of our satellite locations. So City of Hope has quite a few satellite locations throughout the Southern California area. We go from Antelope Valley all the way to Palm Springs. And so what we really want to do is start having Saturday science camps that are going to be, you know, a little bit more advanced than some of the ones we have now, because the ones we have now are for the younger kids that may be in elementary prior to middle school. But what we're going to do is expand those to where we would have some just for middle school kids, as well as some high school kids. In addition to that, we have a summer program, which we've been putting on for the last couple of years, and it's for the kids that are a little bit more scholarly or scholastic, you know, scholastically inclined, so to speak, is what Dr. Therosian, she wanted that. And it's through a Hilton Foundation, and it's a nutritional summer program, in which we talk about the building blocks of nutrition, the difference between empty calories and full calories, how people can be overweight but malnourished. So this is a real program that we offer in the summertime as well. So we have quite a few programs that we will be opening up to, not only Monrovia, but other school districts as well. But we all, we all want to make sure that we slot, we set aside slots just for Monrovia. And so, and the same with Duarte, and the same with Azusa, and the same with El Monte, but we told each one of our superintendents, "If you do not fill your slots, look in the room, because they will fill it." And so the one thing we want to do at City of Hope is to make sure that every program that we have is at full capacity, and we have room to grow, so that we can actually have, instead of having one session, we can have two sessions. And so this is, this is the way we're setting up these programs, and so there'll be plenty of opportunities, and I'll definitely make sure I afford them to you each and every time we have them.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. you know, a little bit more advanced than some of the ones we have now, 'cause the ones we have now are for the younger kids that may be in elementary prior to middle school, but what we're gonna do is expand those to where we would have some just for middle school kids as well as some high school kids. In addition to that, we have, uh, a summer program, which we, we've been putting on for the last couple of years, and it's for the, 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 the kids that are, are a little bit more scholarly or scholastic, you know, scholastically inclined, so to speak, uh, is what Dr. Rosina want, she wanted that, uh, and it's a Hilton, it's through a Hilton Foundation, and it's a nutritional summer program, in which we talk about the building blocks of nutrition, um, the difference between empty calories and full calories, how people can be overweight but malnourished. Uh, so this is a real program that, um, we offer in the summertime as well. So we have quite a few programs that we, we, we will be, uh, opening up to, uh, not only Monrovia, but o- other school districts as well, but, um, we als, we all wanna make sure that we slot, we set aside slots just for Monrovia. And so, and the same with Duarte, and the same with Azusa, and the same with Elmonte, but we told each one of our superintendents, if you do not fill your slots, look in the room, because they will fill it. And so the one thing we wanna do at City of Hope is to make sure that every program that we have is at full capacity. And we have room to grow, so that we can actually have, instead of having one session, we can have two sessions. And so this is, this is the way we're setting up these programs, and so, um, there'll be plenty of opportunities, and I'll definitely, um, make sure I afford them to you, you, each and every time we have them.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
And the exciting times just continue to roll.
That's right.
Thanks so much. All right, with that, we'll move on to hear about, uh, California Dashboard Reports. Uh, Dr. Kaiser, you wanna tell us about our new achievement reporting dashboard?
Absolutely. I'm happy to report to you tonight an informational report on the California Dashboard. And tonight, what we, we will be explaining is the function of the dashboard and the relationship of the dashboard to our local control accountability plan, um, and a report of the data of how our dashboard came out from last year. So, first of all, I'm looking at the dashboard. The dashboard informs the development of our local control accountability plan. And so first of all, the dashboard identifies our strengths and our areas of needs, and it's, it's a bit of a report card. Um, that dashboard, um, also is, we, we're, we look at the local data as well as the dashboard, which provides our local education organization, our district, with additional data to inform the decision-making ma- making prog- um, process and the planning. And that also informs our local control accountability plan. So these are the ve- this is the vehicle for us to review our progress, to articulate the plan, and to address the needs of our students. In our LCAP, we especially look at our three populations, our special, um, populations, our English language learners, our low socioeconomic students, and our foster and homeless youth. And we, we develop, um, strategies for closing that, the achievement gaps. And the goal of all of this is improve student outcomes, so every lens is looking at what are the student outcomes. Our LCAP, um, is based on eight state priorities, and these are the, the priorities. Um, there's a color coding that will be explained in a future slide, if we just hang on a moment. And so the eight priorities are the basic services, our state standards, parent involvement, pupil achievement, pupil engagement, school climate, course access, and other pupil outcomes. This is a rather dense slide, um, yet, so I'll go through this little piece at a time. Um, this is a list of our priorities as identified, and you'll see that there's state indicators and local indicators. So for our first priority, the basic services and conditions, the local indicator, we, we look at our textbooks availability, and we're governed by the Williams legislation, making sure that we have core textbooks in the hands of every student. Um, adequate facilities and correctly assigned teachers, and so we give a report of all of those elements every year. Priority number two is another one of our local reporting, um, areas, the implementation of state academic standards, and we annually report the progress of implementing the standards in the content areas, and this is done through a questionnaire. Priority three, parent engagement, um, this is another local indicator. We annually report the progress towards, um, seeking input from parents and guardians. This really has to do with the process by which we gather information, and the reporting here has been regarding the thought exchange and how we have used our surveys to gather information from parents and the, the wider community. Um, student achievement, this is measured by a state indicator, the academic performance primarily um, through our smarter balanced assessment, and the English learner progress, which is, is judged by several pieces, one of them being re-do- reclassification, another one being how our students do on the assessment for English language learners. Priority five, there's a state indicator for priority five, student engagement. We, um, report the, the data on graduation rates and chronic absenteeism. Priority six has both local and state indicators, the suspension, it's the school climate, and that is judged based on the suspension rate, and we also administer the local climate survey, which is the Healthy Kids Survey, which is given, um, every year, find, to find out what is the, the climate of our, the opinions of our students and some of our parents. Um, priority number seven is a lo- is judged by a local indicator. It's the access to a broad course of study, and here we're looking at the annual report progress of ex- of, um, students that they have access to and they're enrolled in a broad course of study. Some of the things that we look at here mainly have to do with high school, the A through G requirements, students that are enrolled in those courses and completing them, our Avid courses, the pathways, um, the fine arts, and the, the MASA programs, these are all local indicators that are judged to see if we're, um, if our indicator is, is positive in these areas. Priority eight is the outcomes in a broad course of study that has to do with college and career, and that is judged by a state indicator. These state indicators will be reflected on the dashboard as we move along. In the next slide, the eight indicate, the eight pri- state priorities are sorted into three focus areas. These are the colors. And so there are three broad areas that are looked at. The conditions and climate, which is made up of basic services, state standards, and course a- access. Um, academic achieve, engagement, which is parent involvement, student engagement, and school climate. And the third area is academic performance, pupil achievement, and other pupil outcomes. So the three areas, conditions and climate, academic engagement, and academic performance are the three areas that we are judged on as a school district. This slide is directly from the website, and this slide shows how Monrovia is doing on the dashboard. And so as we look at these, um, these pieces, these elements, we see this broad overview, um, this is called the landing page, and this relates to our eight state priorities. In the area of chronic absenteeism, you'll notice that Monrovia is orange. This shows an area that we have some work to do in. We have another orange area, which is mathematics, and so as a district, we're looking very carefully at these two areas. We're having conversations with administrators, we're looking at program concerns to see how we can move the needle in these two areas. Areas where we're doing very well, um, our suspension rate, um, that has, um, our suspensions have gone down as we have been intentionally implementing programs such as the Olveius Program and some of our multiple-tier systems of supports for students. Um, the graduation rate is in the yellow. We have maintained our graduation rate and done relatively well in that area. College and career is green, and so this takes into account the early college program that we have, the Avid programs, um, the career pathway programs. Students enrolled in and completing courses in those programs are what, um, gives us that green score. And then these other areas, um, the basic, the basics, the teachers, instructional materials, and facilities, you'll notice that these other five areas all show that the standards are met, and that's a simple reporting of whether we have met the standards or not met the standards based on standards that the state has set for us. This slide just shows simply our demographics. Um, we have five thousand five hundred and sixty-three students. Sixty point six percent are socially disadvantaged, twelve point nine percent are English learners, and point four are foster youth. This next slide shows the academic performance. This relates to that first category of the state indicator, indicators, one of the categories. It's actually the third category. And so you'll see here, we have the English language arts, the math, and the college and career, all, um, lined up in the dashboard showing us green, um, orange, and green. And again, math is an area that we are looking at very intentionally right now. Um, and you'll notice at the bottom, it says implementation of academic standards, that standards are met here, that we have, um, taken the measures to implement state standards. This area is our academic engagement. Academic engagement relates to chronic absenteeism, graduation rate, and the access to a broad course of study, and so here are the marks for academic engagement. And our third area is conditions and climate. Conditions and climate relate to the suspension rate, um, the ba- basics of teachers, instructional materials, and facilities, parent engagement, and the local climate survey. And when you think of, um, the basics, teachers being credentialed, instructional materials being in the hands of children, and facilities being clean and in good repair, um, that definitely has to do with the condition and the climate set for learning. So it's those foundational pieces. And the last slide that we will look at tonight is the dashboard criteria and a summary. Um, the local measure, the first one, is our implementation of academic standards. The criteria by which this is judged are these, si- these five bullet points. Professional development, what are we doing in the area of developing our teachers and our administrators and our, um, classified employees? Instructional materials, are they appropriate for our students, and are they, um, are they giving the foundation of the rigors that students need to reach? The policies and the program support, implementation of our standards, and the engagement of our school leadership. And then our tool for measuring this is a reflection tool from the California Department of Education that is judged on a scale of one to five. Another local measure is our access to broad course of study. And so here we look, it's locally de- a locally determined measure. Um, we look at differences across school sites, identifications of barriers, and then we look at revisions, decisions, and what are new, new actions that we want for our students. And here we look at where students are rostered, are rosters from Ares. Our basics are those basics that we talked about, teacher assignments, and sufficiency of materials and facilities, and that's all judged through our Williams reporting and our Williams examination that we go through each year. Um, parent engagement, um, how was input sought for decision-making? How were parents participating in programs, and how was it promoted? And how were results reported to stakeholders? And this has been through our dashboard, which is very public, and through the thought exchange. And then our local climate survey is our last local measure. The climate survey measures the perception of school safety and connectedness, and that's given nearly through the California Healthy Kids Survey. So these are the local measures and the criteria by which our dashboard, um, is developed, and the relationship of the dashboard to our LCAP, and those LCAP meetings and collection of information and the data that it takes to put that together, all of that process will be beginning toward the end of this month and going through the next couple of months. Any questions?
I have some questions. I notice on the dashboard, on the main page of the dashboard, um, English learner progress is, is grayed out. There is no color for that. Um, can you tell me why?
Oh, let me get to it. Um, yes, we have no performance color yet, because it's judged on t- in two ways to, to get to the color. It's, uh, on what the growth is and what the status is, and we can't show growth yet because the LCAP wa- is a new assessment. We've only given it one time. So nobody in the state has any color there yet.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
Um, I know that the dashboard itself has changed, and they have restructured it and, um, and updated it. Um, has this information gone to the parents? I mean, the, the dashboard is still the dashboard, but I know it's different. Do we keep our parents, um, and our stakeholders informed about the dashboard, how to access it, and what it means?
This is the first, um, presentation that we've done on the dashboard, as these data are fairly new in terms of being released. And with the release being new, the next step will be presenting this to our administrators, and then having the administrators hold meetings at their school sites to inform the parents.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
One thing about it, once we learn this one, they will come up with a new system, but while we've got it, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, really look at detail what's inside that dashboard. All right, moving on to consent agenda. We have consent agenda items two and four polled. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Ms. Hupp, please take the vote.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Are we voting on pulling those two items from, okay. So they've been polled, so we are voting on the cons- consent agenda with those two items polled. Okay. Okay, yes.
Board president Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, then, moving on to action items, we'll take up, uh, I two, which is one of the polled items from the consent agenda, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, individual service agreements. Uh, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, the Board of Education is requested to ratify individual service agreements for basic education, transportation, counseling, and occupational therapy services for special education students by Canyon View School, Hillside Education Center, uh, and Leroy Haynes. The California Ed Code allows for placement of special education students in non-public schools, agencies, when no appropriate public school programs are available. It should be noted, and this is important, the current agreements reflect the decision of the IEP team, uh, inclusive of parents, teachers, site administrators, school psychologists, et cetera, um, to meet the needs of these special education students. The total estimated cost of these individual service agreements is approximately a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Any questions?
Uh, yes, I, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear for this, um, agenda item number two. Um, the total cost of sending, um, these six students to a non-public school, so this is, so the one hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty cents is for basic education, transportation, counseling, and occupational therapy services for six special education students?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Could I have a motion to move it?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hupp, please take the vote.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board president Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And we'll take up item I four, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen hundred, individual service agreement. Doctor Jackson.
Yes, the Board of Education is requested to ratify individual servit- service agreements for basic education, transportation, counseling, speech, physical therapy, and occupational therapy services for special education students by Frostik School, Rosemary Johnson, Dynamic Therapies, and Leroy Haynes, as detailed in the eighteen, nineteen ISA report. Uh, again, the rationale being the California Education Code allows for placement of special education students in non-public schools, agencies, when, when no appropriate public school programs are available. As previously stated, the current agreements reflect the decision of the IEP team, uh, to meet the needs of these special education students. The total estimated cost of these ISAs is approximately sixty-five thousand five hundred.
Any questions?
Uh, yes, I just want to make sure that I understand this clearly. So the total cost of sixty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars is for the basic of $65,483 is for the basic education, transportation, counseling, and occupational therapy services in a non-public school for these seven students?
Yes.
And that is per year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Could I have a motion, please?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Huff, please take the vote.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board president Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, moving on to business services, item one's project change order number two and three.
Yes. Good evening, board president and the Board of Education, Dr. Kathy Turcien and Cameron. The current estimate cost for position 39 project to replacing the HVS unit at Plymouth, Fennefield, Clifton, and Mayflower is around $5.5 million. That mean that that project will cost almost all the district facility funding as well as the position 39 state grant. After research, the architect from the district and consultant decide to use lighter HVS units to avoid costly structure update in the Clifton. This change will require a design revision. In addition, there's no need to continue the service for the change order number two, which the board of previous approved. So net increase of change order for order number three and the decrease the change order of number one is total around nine, total around $9,002, let me see which one, it's $9,928.80. It's less than $10,000.
Questions? Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Huff, please take the vote.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board president Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to human resources, item two is creation of a new classified management position. Dr. Jackson.
Yes, board president Gilliland. The Board of Education has requested to establish the new classified management position, systems analyst. Rationale being, it is recommended that the board create a classified management position under the general supervision of the superintendent or designee to oversee and direct installation, configuration, and maintenance of server and related equipment to carry data, voice, and video communications, troubleshoot, and resolve server and related IT system problems. And in consultation with the superintendent or designee, this position will inspect and ensure technology systems are performed in accordance with district standards. The Ed Code 45109 states the governing board shall fix and prescribe the duties to be performed by all persons in the classified staff. It should be noted that it is the district's intent to restructure the technology department to meet the current and evolving needs of the district. The previous position coordinator of technology applications will remain vacant due to this restructuring.
So in other words, this is not adding one more position, it's the restructuring of that?
Yes.
At this time?
Yes.
Any questions?
We're basically looking for people with a different skill set?
Yes, and if Charles wants to provide any additional insight, this is your opportunity.
Yeah. Good evening, president Gilliland, board members, cabinet members of the public. The systems analyst position essentially fills a void in our technology service department, and that is essentially to maintain our servers, to keep our servers up to date, upgrade them as necessary when newer versions are released, including the applications, and this is a part that's important, that runs on top of these servers, as well as the systems that are interconnected between one another. It's been a void in our technology services department. A lot of our server operating systems, quite frankly, was installed in 2005 and hasn't been kept up to date.
I did have a question, because I didn't see it anywhere here, and it could be because I didn't read it correctly and missed it. What is the salary for this position?
We've not set the salary yet, but as within the comparison studies that we've done, they would be in the same range as the previous position that's vacating, which is somewhere in the $90,000 range.
Well, I'd like to see this come back when we have a salary attached to it before I approve it.
If I may, in our general process of bringing the position to the board, normally the, because it's a classified position, normally the position is created, presented to the board, and then we would take the position to the Personnel Commission to establish the position within the classified ranks and recommend the salary at that time, and then bring it back to the board for a recommendation.
I understand. We're talking about, I don't want to phrase this the correct way.
Okay.
It's harder to not hire somebody than, and change it than it is to hire them and change it once we've got it. So if we knew what we were looking at financially before going into it, it's much clearer, at least to me, what our expenses long-term will look like. Because it's not so much that we're looking at a $90,000 a year job. It's what does that burden do to the already burdened retirement? What's it do to it? These are questions that I have. They can't be answered right now because I don't know how much this is. I don't know what the step and column looks like. I do not know what I'm burdening somebody 10 years down the road with. I have no idea. I have no way to justify how we burden that. So if a member from the public came up to me tomorrow morning and said, "How much is this new job you just created?" My answer will be, "I don't know." I would expect to be held accountable for that. And I think that it would be better for us if we know what our burden looks like before we say, "Yes, we want to add a new position." I think it's easier to defend from...
Let me ask a clarifying question, because Rob's point is spot on. We need to know what our long-term goals are. But I think in a bigger picture, maybe we can get a better understanding how this fits within the overall reorganization of this particular department. So I had met with Charles earlier, because he's my new liaison guy. So he had brought this up, and my understanding is what we're trying to do is keep the same number of people, is that correct, from what the old staff used to be to where we are going to be at the end of this? Are we adding additional people or not adding additional people within the restructure?
This is restructuring with the idea of looking at bringing back the data support specialist position, a previous position for board to approve down the line.
So the board had previously approved this position, or a similar position. And what we're trying to do is properly, properly identify the work that each particular person is going to do, whereas we're starting to bleed over and people were doing jobs that weren't under their existing description. I know we've done this in other departments periodically to make their job description match their job title. Is that accurate in what we're trying to do?
That's correct.
In the bigger picture, what, how does this affect the overall budget of, for personnel in the tech department? Is your budget, when we include this position in, the way that you've envisioned it with your restructuring of the department, going to be higher or lower than where it is currently?
Or the same. Sorry, I didn't mean to throw a trick question. Yeah, so there is currently a vacancy in the technology department, and there has long been discussion about if there were any movement, how would that department be restructured to be more efficient and effective? And Charles has, Mr. Provokin has looked through that, and this is a position there actually, two positions he would look at because the department has also grown quite a bit. This is not an additional position. This is the restructuring and a change in, not the number of positions or personnel in the department. The reason Mr. Provokin kind of hesitated was because that is something that we've been discussing. We just don't have a funding source yet for that new person. This is part of our current structure. This, sorry, this is part of our current personnel with a change in structure. And the process typically has been, the board approves the position, the position goes to the Personnel Commission, the Personnel Commission approves the position, a salary is established, and then the position comes back to the board for final approval. No, no job has been flown really until the board gives final approval after the job and salary have been set.
I think we're good with if you create a new position because it has new job functions that has to go to the Personnel Commission, and you're going to bring back a salary. That, I think we're all good with that process. What I'm asking for is the big picture, how much more or less is this department going to cost with the restructuring, right? So if you're just shuffling the deck and you're calling things different things and you're assigning different responsibilities to different people, then I'm sure we're going to be much better than adding one person for $90,000, which seems a little bit out of context of the big picture.
Yeah, and you're correct. That description of we are moving things around and not changing the overall burden to the district.
This actually doesn't change the number of people in technology.
It does not change.
So we have four people, we're going to end up with four people at the end.
Yeah. Well, you know, I want to look at, you know, when Mr. Wong talks about the cost in this department, I want to look at not just the cost of personnel, but the cost in the department, because it's technology. So technology, you know, how much of our technological hardware and software is outdated? So we're going to have a new personnel that we're paying, but then, you know, is that person going to come in and say, "All of your technology is outdated, and you're going to have to spend $250,000 updating your technology." So, you know, do we have an idea of not just the cost of the personnel, but the cost of the department?
I can answer, part of that is, we actually upgraded a lot of our hardware and servers in 2016, so it's still fairly up to date. What's not up to date is that although the hardware was, is up to date, the software is not. The software dates back to 2003 to 2005, and that's part of what this position would be do, is keeping the software up to date.
And do we have an idea of how much updating the software is going to cost? Is there a cost involved in that?
We already own the licensing. The way that, for example, Microsoft licenses is an annual cost. You can run whatever version of Windows, it's called Windows Server you want. We're running Windows 2003, which is, think of it in Windows, in Windows 3, it's like the Windows XP of servers. And since then, you know, it's 2019, and we need to upgrade because some of the new hardware that will come out will be running on newer operating systems that won't be compatible with our current server.
So updating our software will have a cost?
We already own the licenses. The cost is needing the personnel.
The cost is the time in making the updates. Okay.
I just want to rephrase that question a little bit, so I'm clear. In the new position or in the restructure, are we adding additional job functions that are not currently being done by people within your existing structure today? Meaning that are we bringing in new people to do and research ideas that we have not seen before, which would bring up the problems that have just been mentioned? Or are we just re-categorizing the work that the new staff will be doing? Are we just shuffling the deck, keeping the same job functions, but reallocating who is going to be doing them and giving them different titles? Or are we actually bringing in additional skill set to analyze and to do new things?
It's bringing in additional skill set. I mean, the ideal candidate I would be looking for in this position would be somebody that's potentially highly certified, a Microsoft certified, what they call solutions expert, that know how to work with the servers, keep them updated.
And that is a function we need today that we do not have?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay.
Just one more part, because I want to go back here and picket this thing for a second. I know there's a business-as-usual way that we like to do things. I will submit the business-as-usual help get us into the hole that we're in, when no one 15 years ago would have been thinking about the unfunded liabilities that we're facing here. These are part of our reality, and we should be very cognizant of them. I know this board is very cognizant of our unfunded liability. So before we burden that any longer, I want to know what that is. The position that is not going to be filled right this minute, what is that position currently? What's the step and column on that?
Entry level is about $65,000.
So we are burdening our budget more, and we're going to be burdening our unfunded liability more, because the person that we're going to have is a whole different person?
For the data specialist position.
We're not discussing a data spec, we're discussing a systems analyst.
System analyst.
That is all we are discussing today. We have discussed, and the board is well aware that we have discussed hiring an additional person in the technology department. This is not that person.
Correct.
And because we have not found a funding source
Correct.
For the $60,000 position. What we are looking at today is the systems analyst position, which is the restructuring of the technology department, bringing in an area of expertise that has not existed in that department in the past, and we are folding a current position. So it is the same number of people with the same financial burden to the district, not adding a burden to the district. It is all the same, just additional expertise in an area we've not met before.
So this person that we would hire, their pay is already in our budget?
Yes.
Okay.
But, okay, if, if, there's a problem with just the simple math. If this is cost-neutral, right? That's what I understood, cost-neutral?
Yes.
Theoretically, right? Since we haven't approved it, we don't know, but theoretically. And Rob brings up the point that this person is $90,000, and the vacancy is $60,000.
That was, that's why...
That's a mistake.
Yes.
I just want to be clear.
That was a misunderstanding.
That implies somebody is going to take a pay cut.
No, that was a misunderstanding, Dr. Jackson. That's why I tried to clarify it. It is cost-neutral.
Across the board, all in.
That is correct.
This might help the board. We have time. I mean, so what we're being asked to do today, I want to make sure I'm understanding, is to give approval for you to bring this to Personnel Commission. At the time that the Personnel Commission gives our recommendation for a pay scale, the board still has the authority to say no, correct?
Yes, and I could include the pay scale in this Friday's update as well.
I would ask that before it comes back to us from the Personnel Commission, that we have a breakdown and a better understanding of how this personnel function within the entire department is going to work, how it is today, and what it's going to look like in the future.
I would ask, in the future, when something is new, like this is created, if we could please have the proposed salary schedule attached to it, just so that we can under, because that's the only thing, I ask, well, how much is this going to cost me? And there's just no answer to it. And I'm sorry that I looked at my agenda this morning, and it was, it became glaringly obvious that there was no dollar amount attached to a position.
It wouldn't matter if you looked on Saturday, because it wasn't there then either.
And nobody was here on Saturday.
Been there in the past.
Any more discussion on this?
I'd like to know if our systems analyst will also be someone who can work on our website, or is that a different position?
That's different altogether.
All right, could I have a motion?
I move to approve. I'll second.
Ms. Huff, please take the vote.
This half, please take the vote.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board president Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item is item three, Technology Services Renewal of a Contract with Jive Communications. My whole reason, go ahead, Dr. Ar-
Did you practice that?
Ed had been working on this.
What do you have for your phone? Oh, Jive Communications, I don't know.
I was surprised you didn't have a hand movement for that. Jazz hands, okay.
I'm sorry. Um, the Board of Education has requested to approve a new proposal from Jive Communications for VoIP, um, which is telephone services, uh, services. Uh, the district joined in with other San Gable Valley school districts, um, that are currently using Jive to negotiate a consortium pricing. Uh, with this agreement, we will be paying thirty percent less than what we are currently paying for, uh, telephone services. And, uh, this would be a thirty-six month agreement.
I do have some questions. The issues that we've had with our telephones lately, are they Jive related or are they some other related?
That's my question also.
There's been various issues since I've been here. Some of them have been Jive related. Some of them have been, quite frankly, us related. The majority of them has been, uh, Jive related. Um, the most recent one was an outage that took the, um, basically most schools out for about three, three days. And what they did was they, they switched the circuit over here without letting us know. And, um, when they switched, it was, it didn't work. And they didn't properly test it, so it took them about two days to bring it, um, up and running. So, most schools were up within two days. And then we had three schools that took the third and fourth day to, to bring up. And that required some reprogramming on our end to, to make it work.
So, I assume that you, uh, did talk to other vendors and with other school districts on what other options may be available?
Uh, yes, I have. And all the current, uh, San Gable Valley schools that were using Jive, um, they're all renewing with, with Jive. Because they are, uh, in this space, they're familiar with, with school districts. And we've been fairly happy with them. The majority of the schools have been fairly happy with them.
So, you're confident that the problems we've encountered were isolated?
Isolated.
For the, the one-week outage, that, that was a, an isolated, uh, occurrence. They usually have a ninety-nine percent uptime, like ninety-nine point nine-nine percent uptime.
Okay.
Have you, um, gotten quotes from other, um, services?
Um, I haven't gotten quotes from, from other services. I've gone, I've been going off mainly, um, working with cons- consortium and going, um, with, um, talking with other school districts and knowing that, um, any other provider out there that may be offering a lower cost, you would probably be getting a much lower services because then you're talking about the, the local vendors. Uh, Jive is a nationwide provider that is, uh, very well regarded. And, um, I know that the quotes that if you went for another well-regarded provider such as AT&T or Verizon, they would be much higher.
Any more questions?
As, as I understand this, so this, i- if I were to call the other office from, from the phones, this goes to Utah to come back here, right? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, what happens in an emergency like an earthquake?
That's a good question. If you were to look at the quote, if you were to look at a quote, there was a one-time cost to upgrade hardware. And, um, that one-time cost is to upgrade, um, uh, basically, uh, is to add, uh, uh, an emergency line. So-
A hardwired phone?
A hardwire, a hardwired phone. So, how it would work is, for example, uh, let's take a school site. Should the internet line goes down, it would be hardwired to one physical phone. And, um, so for, for the purposes of like nine-one-one, for example, it would go out that one analog line. Now, um, this is obviously for emergency purposes only. Um, once that one phone call is made, if someone else tries to make a phone call, that, that phone, phone line is, is tied.
Um, can you show me where that quote is to add that, um, analog? Um, emergency?
Yeah, let me pull that up.
I- is it in the quote that's in the agenda?
Let me pull it up real quick, let's see here.
Because I didn't see that.
Yeah, if you look at the, there's a line item for two hundred and fifty dollars times fourteen for a one-time cost of thirty-five hundred. It's called the JBC rack mount. It's that hardware device that will allow that capability.
And that is one phone? Or is it one phone per site?
It's one phone per site, so what you-
So, it's fourteen sites?
It's fourteen, fourteen locations, yes.
So, is the price that you, um, so what we are, uh, looking at, the cost for this service is twenty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-one, eighty-eight? Does that include that jack mount?
Yes, so if you were to look at the quote, there's a, a cost of seven-two-two-five and twenty-one cents after discounts. You multiply it by, that by three, because that's the thirty-six month term. And then you add the one-time cost of thirty-eight oh six twenty-five and that will give you your total.
Okay, so we will have that hardwired phone with this plan?
You would have the hardwired. And what we'll be doing is a lot of the, uh, uh, sites right now, they have like a fax line, they already have an analog line. So, we can tap into, um, the analog lines. And basically for nine-one-one purposes, for emergency purposes, you're going out that one analog line.
But if our power goes out, there's no phone. So, maybe it's not a massive emergency like a fire or an earthquake because this is voice-over IP. So, if our power is out and our computers are out, then our phones are out, correct?
Uh, that's, uh, not correct. If our power goes out, um, our network closets, they have a, a battery backup and it will sustain, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can provide that, uh, at a board update. But I, I think it sustains a minimum of about thirty, thirty minutes if I were to take a, a guesstimate at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Could I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
I'll second, oh, sorry.
All right, this half, please take the vote.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board president Gillen- Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to board business, uh, we didn't designate a representative to the L.A. County School Trustees Association, LAXTA, uh, during the organizational meeting. Is there any desire to appoint a representative from our district to that body? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five, designate board members to attend community meetings. Uh, Chamber of Government Affairs, who wants to do that?
What was the time on that again?
When's the, uh?
That's the evening one, right?
Yeah.
That's the evening at, uh-
The government affairs one was at eight o'clock Tuesday mornings.
It's a morning, yeah.
That's why I could not do that one.
That will not fit.
Anybody want to bite the bullet for an eight o'clock Tuesday meeting? All right, we'll come back to that. Uh, Chamber Board of Directors, I think, Mr. Travanti, did you say you wanted to do that one?
I can go ahead and do that one, yes.
You know what, go backwards on that other one. Um, I'll try it and see if I can do it okay. What, what's the, what's the, uh-
Government Affairs?
Yes, what, it's eight o'clock on what day?
Tuesdays.
Tuesday, is it once a month, I'm assuming?
I believe it was.
I think it's.
Oh, I'll try it and see.
All right, coordinating council is at seven-thirty every first Monday. I'll take that unless somebody else really wants it. Uh, MFA, do we have anybody that would like to be the representative to the MFA?
That's the evening one, right?
That's the Wednesday evening one, yeah.
It's Wednesday evening?
Tuesday.
Oh.
Oh, I thought, okay, Tuesday evening. Once a month, I'm sure, yeah. Ms. Lockerbie, will we put you down for that one?
Well, what?
All in favor?
You don't dare ask a question about it, Rob, that's a volunteer.
If you don't want to do it, I'll do it.
I'm okay, my, my Girl Scouts, my Girl Scouts meet on Wednesday, so you can, uh-
You're inkt.
I get it, I guess so. All right, Celine.
All right, are there any other community, uh, groups that we need to have a representative at? Okay, moving on to designate representative to work with lobbyists, David Church and Associates. Before we assign that, I would like to put that on the agenda for a future to, uh, get a report on what we've received from that agreement and what the cost of that agreement is. And so that we can evaluate that, that relationship and see if we want to go forward with it.
Cost of, cost to the district for having a, um-
For paying the lobbyists.
Oh, cost for having a lobbyist?
To have the lobbyists, yeah. We have one now, when we, when we went to the Hill, when we went to Washington DC and talked to our representatives about special education and the lack of funding coming out of DC, we felt as a board that it was worthwhile to have somebody in DC that could be our representative, talking to people up there. At this point in time, I'm questioning the need for that and the value of that at, at this point in time.
How long have we had that, had a lobbyist?
Year and a half. This is our second year, yeah. So, I, I think we need to look at what it costs us, what we're getting out of it before we continue with that, so. Let's put that on a future agenda item so we can look at some numbers when we're doing that.
Of course.
Excuse me, question, just for information, who has been the liaison in the past, who is still on the board? Who is, who has the experience with dealing with the lobbyists? Have we had a liaison from the board?
Rob's been the one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else there? Pending board issues, I had a couple of comments on that. One of the pending board items is, uh, facilities master plan, we're supposed to get an update. Are we gonna, is the contractor going to be ready to provide us that update at the next meeting?
Yeah, um, we already tell the, um, my team and I, we will meet to the, uh, architect room tomorrow at eight-thirty. And the schedule is, uh, we plan to schedule, um, board dissection for next, um, board meeting, which is on January twenty-third, so that they can plan the board, what is assumption, what is the basic use and what is their conclusion, the preliminary conclusion they have right now? And if the board has additional requirement or additional, uh, input, then they can incorporate in the, in the final report. That's our plan.
At that point, we'll have some idea of what they're saying our deferred maintenance costs are or are they not quite to that point yet?
Um, I will find out tomorrow.
Okay, all right. I look forward to hearing that report.
Can you, yeah, can you provide, um, that information on a-
Can we put it in our Friday update and give us a little bit better, fuller, fuller scope of just as far as an agenda goes of what we're going to get and what we are not going to get, at least what the game plan is?
Okay, sure.
Thanks.
All right, and then we also, uh, still call on our report for a monthly update on the JESI program. And I thought we had agreed to change that to like a quarterly report. Is that right?
Yep.
All right, uh. There was one other one here. Oh, we, we added, at the last meeting, we added the, uh, state of the schools. And under that, we put it as a plan, a community-wide event with an overview of progress and plans, next steps, two thousand eighteen, nineteen. I wonder if we don't want to, uh, designate a couple of board members as a subcommittee to, uh, just help get that process started and give us a report each month on where we're at with that?
I'm happy to do it, what do you like?
I think last time we did this, we had, uh, the board president do it since they were the person who delivered it. And-
But we're talking, I think we're, I think we're looking at some options this time of maybe having, uh, each of the board members do part of the presentation, uh, some options. I'm not that that's any final decision or anything, so, uh-
If, if you would, okay, this is not to pat my back. I started the state of the city. I think I could probably replicate it for the state of the schools.
I'd like to participate in this as well.
I can help you, I can help with that. If, if anybody wants to have help, I'm happy to help.
I'm okay of saying, Mritz and Rob will work with Kathy to get something together.
Happy to, happy to help.
Happy to help as well.
At least if we got a group that's, then hopefully we'll get some momentum going.
Sounds good.
It's your, it's your dog and pony show.
Well, I, I just reintroduced it. But, um, yeah, I'm happy to be collab- collaborate with you, Rob and, and Kathy.
All right, anything else on the pending board issues? All right, then, moving on to old business, uh, the next regular board meetings are January twenty-third, February thirteenth, February twenty-seventh. All the board meetings will be at seven, but sounds like we're going to have a lot of study sessions prior to sevens. New business, uh, Martin Luther King Day is the twenty-first. All sites closed and the pupil free day, uh, for end services, January twenty-eighth. Any other new business? All right, then, I'd like to adjourn this regular Board of Education open session meeting in the memory, memory of Charlotte Shumadon. Charlotte's been a pillar of the community and has exemplified, uh, computer, uh, community involvement and volunteerism. She's been a member or officer of almost every group in town, every committee, every, uh, uh, group that's putting on events. And, uh, she just exemplifies what it means to be a part of a community and to be a person that doesn't just sit back and say, "Hey, you should do this," but says, "Hey, let's do this." And, uh, she's been a, she was a key player in getting the library funded and built. And, uh, certainly has been a great partner for Monroev Unified School Districts on many projects and, and programs in the district. So, uh, Charlotte's going to be greatly missed in this community and in this district. With that, we'll adjourn that ten minutes after.